And noting the hour and presence of a quorum, I will call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Although we are in person tonight, members of the public who wish to view the meeting may do so using Acton TV’s YouTube channel, which is found at the top of the agenda. This evening’s meeting is being recorded and will be posted on Acton TV’s website at actontv.org. Welcome, everybody. As you might notice, Peter’s not with us this evening. He’s attending a professional development workshop this week. In his place, we have Marie here to support us. Thanks, Marie. Great to have you here. Next item on our agenda is the student representative update. I see DePree over there. Come on up.
Hello. First, I’d like to update you about my observations surrounding the mask optional policy. Firstly, many students and faculty are choosing to not wear masks. Many are choosing to continue wearing masks. It is very close to an even split. I have yet to witness any harassment or conflict surrounding the mask optional policy. I think something notable is that faculty or students who are recovering from illness or who have the cold or the flu will wear masks when they wouldn’t when they were healthy. So masks continue to be a healthy element in school, but also the optionality of it is being respected and upheld. Next, senior slide has begun. I’m sure that was very predictable. This year is not unique in that sense. Next, senior programming, like prom, Kimball’s Farm Trip, Community Service Day, graduation, and project graduation have a lot of enthusiasm surrounding it. The senior advisory meeting I attended a few days ago was very rowdy and energetic. Knowing how enthusiastic the class 2022 is, I suspect that there will be very good incentives for people to pay their outstanding dues and tickets. Regarding the mascot, the four candidates that currently exist, Nor'easter, Stingers, Revolution, and United, all of them are very uncontroversial. I’ve heard no one take any offense to any. And I’ve also witnessed a mixture of support for all four of them. That is it for my update. Thank you.
Thanks very much, DePree. Okay, we’re going to move on to public participation. Before we start, I’d like to see a show of hands. How many people here are interested? A pretty packed agenda already, so I want to... Okay, so I see 10 people. I’m going to ask that members of the public who do wish to speak this evening do so for up to two minutes this evening, per our public participation policy. Please note that the committee will not answer questions during this time. If you wish, you may email the superintendent and the school committee, and we’ll respond to questions that way. So for those who do wish to speak this evening, considering there’s several, why don’t we start a line? First person can come up to the mic, and then we can build a line beyond that. Is there a member of the committee who can help keep time this evening? Oh, and yes, before we... I got the time. Before we do get started, I just want to point out that Rebecca Wilson is in the audience this evening. She has recently been elected as a member from Acton for the school committee. Welcome, Rebecca. Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Nickel. I live in Acton. I just want to start off by thanking the school committee for their decision one and a half years ago to retire the mascot. Also, I want to thank the school committee for forming a renaming committee that is working diligently to get a lot of input, to choose a new mascot. I know that there are a lot of folks here who are still unhappy about the retirement. They’re still unhappy about the process that was undertaken to retire the mascot by the school committee. And I just want to remind everyone here why that decision was made in the first place. I see the school district’s values written up on the screen: wellness, equity, and engagement. This decision to retire the mascot was made with the consideration of wellness of our student body in mind. I just recently started working in a classroom in an elementary school, and so I’m seeing firsthand the new students that are coming and will eventually be at the junior high and high school. And those students deserve an inclusive mascot. There are students in our school who are indigenous. Their ancestors were enslaved and killed during the colonial period. There are students in our schools whose ancestors come from the kingdoms of Africa, and those ancestors were enslaved. I have a student in my first grade class who was born in Korea and moved here as a baby. As recently as nineteen... in the 1940s, Korea was under colonial rule from Japan. I have a student whose ancestors came from India, and their grandparents and great-grandparents lived through British colonial rule and partition. So if the folks here can’t find compassion for the school committee members, I hope that they can find some compassion for the student body who deserve an inclusive mascot.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Madeline, and I live here in Acton. There have been... There may be a few people here tonight planning to urge the school committee to reinstate the colonial mascot during this public comment section. I would like to ask respectfully to please reconsider. The school committee has told us that this decision will not be revisited. The school committee has told us that this decision will not be overturned. The mascot was retired a year and a half ago. This decision was unanimous. The decision was a school committee decision, not a community decision, not a town meeting decision, not an alumna decision, not a staff decision, not an administration decision, not even a student decision. The school committee sought input from the community, alumna, staff, administration, students to inform their decision, but the authority to retire the mascot or not reinstate it entirely with them. If you believe otherwise, you’ve been misinformed. The renaming committee invited us all to submit suggestions for a new mascot to replace the retired mascot. How unfortunate that so many choose to disenfranchise themselves by instead suggesting the colonial. If you are here to suggest that the retired mascot be reinstated, please reconsider. Consider what example you want to set for your children in our community, for the current students, for the future students. Consider the duties of the school committee members and administration who are serving here tonight and conducting important business. As part African, part European, and part indigenous, I ask people to please have some compassion over us. We matter, and this is just beyond ridiculous. Please reconsider what you’re doing here. Set an example for the future. Me and my children already suffer enough discrimination because of who we are, and this is just beyond ridiculous. Thank you.
I’m Scott Smires, Central Street, Acton. And the mascot is a big issue. I’m sure you’re going to hear a lot about that tonight, but really, and I believe that there was some real major flaws in getting rid of it and the new process now that we’ve got more information on the actual survey results and the comments from the students. But Peter Light is not here tonight. He consistently says, “Oh, ask a question. Send me an email about that.” So last... On March 24th, I sent him an email with some very specific questions about some deeper topics than the mascot, which is symbolic of these deeper topics. I do agree. And I asked him that... I told him that many parents are concerned about how and what children are being instructed on the topics of race and gender in the school. There have been statements at the school committee that anti-racist topics will be added into every subject at every grade level. We want to know the details. He didn’t provide the details. We want to know, are the same topics appropriate for 11th and 12th graders that are for first and second graders? We know that’s not the case. We need to know the details of that. Parents have the right to know what’s being taught and by who. Are these licensed therapists that are also math teachers? Probably not. You know, we need to know that. I also asked how the stated policies to hire new teachers, prioritizing certain ethnicities and sexual orientation, how can that not violate Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964? He did not answer that question. Just this week, there was a ruling of the Superior Court in California striking down a requirement for racial quotas on corporate boards. The legislative... The judge said, “The legislature is thinking in group terms, but California Constitution protects the right of individuals,” not to equal treatment, not groups. That’s what you’re doing here. You’re putting people into groups. You’re not treating people as individuals. I have for you, for the record...
Thank you, Scott. Your time is up.
I’m entering this into the record. This is not part of my statement. This is the California decision.
Please provide it to the secretary, and she’ll take it. Watch your step there. There’s a cable. Thanks.
Thanks for my two minutes.
Hello. Fred Smith, resident of Acton and parent of three Acton... current Acton students. I’d like to thank the school committee for appropriately responding to the wishes of the students, who overwhelmingly support the retirement of the old mascot. I’d like to make you aware that the majority of the current Acton school community supports this decision. It’s clearly only the alumni and unaffiliated town residents who are attempting to overrule the decision. Please do not be dissuaded. We support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good evening. I’m Rebecca Wood. That is my daughter Charlie. She’s a student here in Acton, and I fully support the changing of the name of the Colonials. Equity is one of our regional school district’s values, and I want my daughter to grow up in a diverse community that celebrates equity, and I feel like the old mascot does not do that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
John Greenland, Fort Yagewam Road in Acton. I am a taxpayer, and I vote. My son plays on the JV baseball team. Much rather the school pay for cleaning up the JV baseball field than changing a mascot. One other thing is that, based on this last survey data, it looks like the colonial name got more votes than any other option by an order of magnitude. That’s significant. Very, very significant. I’m not sure if you guys are sweeping this data under the rug, or that you’re taking it into account, but that data doesn’t lie. I think it needs to be contended with, and, yeah, that represents what the sentiment is out there in the community. That’s it.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Luci, resident of Acton. Putting aside the questionable ethical practices of the elected committee relative to the mascot topic here tonight, how is the town proposing to pay for this and over what period of time? Has a financial impact study been conducted, and what is the total estimated cost? I know you can’t answer these questions tonight. I just wanted to go on record with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Casebolt, Boxborough. Depot Road in Boxborough. I would like to take this time to read into public records some detailed results of the AB mascot community survey, which were obtained via a formal public records request. The AB mascot community survey, which was sponsored by the AB RSC Mascot Screening Subcommittee in January, was hosted on Survey Monkey. Over 2,000 survey responses were received and provided 435 unique suggestions for a mascot name. Of the 2,000-plus surveys, about 1,800 contained mascot name suggestions. Of the mascot name suggestions, only 16 were suggested by 10 or more survey respondents. The top four are as follows: 682 for the Colonials, 53 for the Eagles, 53 for the Revolutionaries, 52 for the Coyotes. The survey respondents classified themselves into one or more of the following subcategories: current students, alumni, staff, coach advisor, parent guardian, and community member. It should be noted that, per the survey, Colonials was overall the most popular mascot suggestion. Colonials was the most popular suggestion within each of the respondent’s subcategories, with the exception of AB staff, where it tied with the Eagles for first place. Additionally noteworthy is the fact that the current finalist of the AB mascot community survey, which is active and closes on April 22nd, narrowed the survey results down to AB United, Stingers, Nor'easters, and Revolution. Revolution, similar to Revolutionaries, is the only one appearing in the top four results of the initial AB mascot community survey.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, please.
Christine Marlowe, Depot Road, Boxborough. I’m going to be reading the comments from the students about why they chose to reinstate. They want the colonial reinstated. It doesn’t need to be changed. It was a normal mascot. It isn’t racist or anything like that. Firstly, it represents the Colonials that fought for independence against the British. I don’t know what’s wrong with it necessarily. Secondly, it was fine for a long time. I don’t see what’s wrong with it now. Just going to say it, believe it or not, nobody is offended by a mascot, and it causes zero harm to anybody. It’s being canceled just for the sake of being canceled. Changing it is basically a publicity stunt with no real meaning behind it. Whoever is offended by a mascot is doing it to themselves for real. Number 22, the school committee should not be allowed to privately make the executive decision to remove a mascot that the vast majority of the towns of Acton and Boxborough support creating unnecessary division in the town. The fact that this has happened, especially at the time that it did, shows that the school committee does not have the AB community’s best interest at heart. It is shameful what has happened. Number 53, we have jerseys for it. We don’t have to spend millions of dollars raising money for new jerseys and new banners and new everything. Number 69, don’t take the ideology of 25 students and call it the general thinking of the population. This is unfair to a very large majority of the community. We never got a say. This is a performative activism at its finest. 71, colonial times are part of history. History is not racist. I think that it should not be taken the way it is being taken, as people think that it is racist. I have not talked to anyone who doesn’t approve of Colonials. We aren’t... It was not a public decision.
Thank you. Your time is up.
I’m going to continue what she did. Nijan Datta, Wintler Drive, Acton. Number 102, I have not talked to anyone who doesn’t approve of Colonials. It was not a public decision. The majority most definitely did not overturn the mascot. Colonials has been the mascot for a very long time. When you get rid of Colonials, you get rid of colonial spirit. No reason to get rid of it. Spending taxed dollar money to change the mascot when literally no one wants it changed. Don’t change it because a large majority of the school is already opposed to changing the mascot, and changing it will cause great division in the school. Number 107, the mascot should not be changed. We shouldn’t change the mascot because of a very small group of people who want to. It is part of our history. 138, I truly believe that the... around the name not representing everyone as a whole, and that it may represent beliefs that contradict the school’s... history of what a colonial is. The claims to remove the mascot is not factual. A colonial has no relationship to colonialism, something that is undeniably bad. Back in 1620, the pilgrims landed in Massachusetts after facing severe racism, classism, and oppression, persecution in England. Groups of these oppressed people banded together despite their differences to take a stand against the oppression they faced. When I proudly say I am a colonial, I’m proudly representing the belief held by early colonists, the pilgrims, to take a stand against oppression in the form of racism, classism, and religious persecution. While it is important that we do a better job acknowledging in our schools and our community... American, various awful things. Those are not the values our school is proudly representing when we say we are Colonials, when we’re wearing the logo and name on our jerseys. I believe that the decision to change the mascot was made with our proper input from the different groups represented in our school and our community.
Candice Sheer-King. I’m going to keep continuing to read the students’ comments. 156, the Colonials fought for our freedom and gave birth to this amazing country. If not for them, we would not be where we are today. The removal of the Colonials was completely unfair. The whole town should have voted whether they changed the mascot instead of a small group of people who wanted to get rid of it. I also want the Colonials as a mascot, but their voices are not heard. Number 159, bring back the name Colonials. It was an extremely poor decision to have taken the name away from the decades of students before 2020, who proudly cheered and supported the AB Colonials. You will not make this situation right by naming a new mascot that will bring unity. You created this division by changing the name. I vote for the one and only name the mascot should be, Bring Back the Colonial. Your committee was wrong to have changed the name, especially when so many community members signed a petition to keep the colonial name. You’ve overreacted to a small group of easily offended students that are clueless and live in the little bubble that their parents created for them. You are all such a disappointment for our school community. Number 189, we were never given a choice. There was a petition created a while back called Save Our Colonials on Change.org that got 2,974 signatures. I feel that the decision was made was not fair and should be reevaluated. Number 197, stop pandering and stand up for the history of our town. Absolutely disgraceful and pathetic. You are spineless and weak. The Colonials is the only name. It’s the blank history of our country and town. I’m not going to continue with the end of that sentence. Number 205, nothing about it is racist, and taking it away caused so much unwanted controversy that just needs to end with our original mascot coming back and making everyone happy. If you choose a new mascot, the only thing you’re going to cause is a very upset town.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Hi, my name is Patricia Angel, and I’m an Acton-Boxborough Regional Alumni. I’d like to read the statements from the students. So, 276, I feel though the decision to retire the mascot was unfairly decided by the team of 25 students, voices that did not represent the entire side of the issue. The community had no absolute no say in the matter. There was a student-run petition with close to 3,000 signatures, disagreeing with the decision to have our team heritage and school spirit being ripped away from us. I would like the decision to retire the mascot to be rescinded and let more voices in the AB community be heard. No other mascot will represent this school well. It is a tradition, and you just can’t throw away and pretend it didn’t happen, especially when the vast majority of the community still aligns with it and feels representative by it. It is a completely unfair. I think you should actually listen to what the community wants. It is performance activism and makes the administrative look politically correct in the eyes of one certain community. This decision has divided this school more than ever. 290, we should not have to change it because we are trying to get rid of the past, and that suffers is history. Every country has done its bad stuff, and they do not want to get rid of it. So why should we get rid of it? We should hear from it. Don’t change it. Keep it. We are trying to hide from the past. Student 450, the Colonials were brave people from our own Acton-Boxborough with families who cared for them. They lost their lives that, so we could hear, could build communities with freedom and speech, religion, and lots of other inclusivity. This mascot honors them in an appropriate manner. I want you to listen and care for the opinions of everyone in the Acton-Boxborough Regional community. This includes students, alumni, and citizens, especially the ones whose taxes will be going toward the mascot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucia Marsala, Boxborough. I’m going to continue to read the students’ comments. 452, the Colonials represent our history in Massachusetts and how our country began. Not every colonial is the same, but I thank them for my home. 26, before a removal and change of the mascot, we should educate students on why the colonial mascot was chosen. Also give the AB community a fair chance to weigh in their opinions before letting a minuscule group make the decision. Don’t spend millions of dollars in taxpayer and donor money to make mascot change in which they have no say in. What the committee decided was faulty and is completely unnecessary. Use the resources the great AB community has to make real change. Donate to a charity, fund families displaced by COVID, or invest in a better learning environment for kids. The history and origins of this community cannot be erased. We must take accountability for what our founders did wrong, yet honor the idea that they created a community for us to have this conversation in the first place. We can’t let the wrong side of history dictate who we are. Instead, let it serve as a reminder of the mistakes those before us had made. This suggestion was not meant to hurt, insult, or target anyone involved in this controversy. I just wanted to stick up for the AB community and many of its members who have not been represented through the issue. Once this is settled, no matter the outcome, I hope we can all shift our focus to unify a community badly hurt over this past year. In the future, I believe that it should be the community’s job to make this decision. School officials, committees, and administrators should simply create a space for discussion and work towards mediating the issue. 28, it’s a legacy of both academic and athletic excellence, so we must continue that tradition. 45, it wasn’t wrong. We are the Colonials, and it really won’t ever change. 60, there was no racist suggestion from the mascot before it became a debate. It will cost far too much money to redo all the parts of the school campus and around town that feature Colonials name and image. It is history, and there is no point in removing history that has happened. The cost and time it will take to replace the fields, tracks, scoreboards, new baseball curtain, gym floors, et cetera, should be considered. 437, I have no say in this vote to change the mascot and believe that it was wrong. We retired. Don’t change the mascot.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Martin Benson, 21 Deacon Hunt Drive. It’s now clear that the recent mascot survey study was faulty and manipulated from the top. The process needs to be redone over and include the colonial as an option for the school district’s mascot. There is nothing in the district’s naming policy that would prohibit this. Further, in the best interest of the school district, Peter Light needs to step down from the mascot naming committee and have no further involvement in it. Over the last two years, he has behaved in a manner unbecoming of a superintendent. Some examples of his behavior include the following: one, not allowing students supporting the colonial mascot to present to the school committee; two, telling members of ABSEGE that all they had to do was make a speech before the school committee, and the school committee would take care of the rest; three, having text message communications with Acton Town Manager John Manjirati, in which two... these two district and town employees discuss trying to prevent the Acton Select Board from adding an item to their agenda to discuss the mascot retirement; four, there were multiple troubling and concerning reports of Mr. Light abusing his position of power and privilege by harassing and intimidating district employees who are supportive of the retention of the colonial mascot; five, at the October 15, 2020 school committee meeting, Mr. Light falsified the district facility naming policy to both the school committee and the community; six, records requests show that following the December 17, 2020 Zoom bombing, the superintendent orchestrated a PR campaign seeking to link the colonial mascot supporters to the incident despite there being no evidence of their connection. This effort included the issuing of erroneous public statements, production of a propaganda video, and communications with AB United Way Chair Greet DeHansseder and Acton Select Board Member David Martin to coordinate the... ...individuals ever apologized when it was determined that the Zoom bomber was a juvenile in Arizona with no connection to the AB community.
Thank you.
...refusal to comply with public records law. We can... ...and number eight... ...the district’s facility naming policy. The colonial mascot is a sacred symbol to many residents of our two towns. Mr. Light is not from... not from nor a resident of either town. Nonetheless, since the summer of 2020, he has made it his mission to remove the mascot and complete... Given Mr. Light’s behavior, we demand his immediate removal from the mascot subcommittee. It’s imperative that the school committee finally acknowledge not just their error, but the hurt and division they have caused in the community. If the school committee still feels it’s necessary to rename the mascot, they should restart the process consistent with the district’s naming... district’s facilities naming policy, in the same manner in which the school committee is now approaching the naming of the high school and auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Ballard from Boxborough. Someone asked me to come to this, and I’m going to be the contrarian, as I always am, by going against my usual self and saying I support this committee, and I support your decisions and the process that has been followed, and I believe that, you know, the students and the faculty and you as the board are doing the right thing, and that is very... In fact, you know, if you’re going to go with a history theme for one of these... of these, one of these actually, revolution is much better. It's more inclusive, as your first speaker said, which is consistent with your values in that you can include Isaac Davis as revolutionary and you don't have the baggage of colonization or Colonials there. All of this stuff, you can look at both horizontally and vertically in history, you can see revolution says the what, the best things that we have in our values of inclusion in this state are the Commonwealth or mass bake colony and forward. And we had people back then, just shortly after, you know, who, you know, were liberators, resistors, Chey's Rebellion, Quack Walker, Mum Bet, and the greatest judge nobody knows about, William Cushing, who was the first SJC judge, and then he was, he should have been the head of the Supreme Court. He was there for a long time. And he was way ahead of his time in, in defining what would happen over the next hundred years with the, you know, the transcendentalist in the 19th century abolitionists then, and then in the civil rights movement later, to actually define and expand the definition of freedom and who is included in that. To include women, and now in 2003, it's gay people. And for that, it was not just Englishmen. And so that's what we need to do, find something that's consistent. Thank you.
Hello, Anthony Belissimo, parent of two Acton students. I would like to echo what a few others have said in thanking the committee for not only kind of walking through this process and as a process, but also for continuing to withstand the torrent of conspiracy thinking and general nonsense that has surrounded this issue, both here in person, in various online forums. It is amazing to me, the degree of contempt that drips from a lot of the statements that were read in some, you referenced history, which is all well and good. But when you hear, these people were raised in a bubble. These people are easily offended. The, you know, you have people who are minimizing legitimate concerns that people have with respect to the mascot. And it is, the question is, whose opinion counts? People here have expressed that the loudest opinion should win. I don't think that brigading a Survey Monkey survey is necessarily the winning argument that you think it is. And we have two thirds of this room probably that is fighting harder to keep the Colonial as our mascot than the Colonials did to remain Colonials. This is not what they, this is not what they wanted, or they wouldn't be trying, they wouldn't have had a revolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'd like to continue with what the students have saying. I'm Colleen, I'm from Boxborough, old AB alumni. I just want to say that I'm here because Colonial to me, going through a close-knit town, was freedom, and it was a spirit that came along with the community coming together. And I've seen this community grow and grow, become diverse. It's wonderful and I love it. And the thing that bothers me is that students, the student body, has not been heard. So I'm going to continue with 443. AB School Committee did not take my view and the view of many other students into account. Not right and reverent name. Students decide, not school committee. And we like what Colonial, it is our mascot, we choose the name. School committee stay out, maybe change the name of the school committee. The students voted to keep it, and the majority wanted to. We all know that. It's a joke to take away the Colonials as our mascot. They are terrible parts of Colonial history, but we wouldn't live the lives we do if it wasn't for them. Changing is a joke and we all know it. How we can expect to be progressive when we are just trying to change, forget the past instead of showing where it came from and how we've changed our history for the better? So sad. Number 40. Many schools around AB have kept their mascots. While I do not believe that the racism and treatment of Native people and people of color by the colonists was right, I would like to consider the fact that almost all land anywhere in the world was invaded or taken by someone. Let us not forget that the reason we are concerned about inclusivity is because of the United States and all the freedoms its people have. Appeal to the many looking to immigrate, these freedoms are only possibly because of the people that fought for our freedom. That this movement is trying to condemn despite the fact that people, many people sacrificed their lives for the freedom of future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rita McCarthy. I'm with at, in Boxborough, 863 Depot Road. I'm an older alumni and I'm going to continue reading from the students because I agree with them. I think we need to bring back the Colonials. We cannot change everything that happened in the past. It brings back back times, yet many of these people fought for our country, that fought for our freedom. To me seems tyrannical. When we look back to the Colonials, they were outnumbered by these, the brave people that fought for the freedom of our great country, America. And we cannot let them be dusted away like their dust. This is why we need to bring back the Colonials. It's honoring names that fought for our country, and is in no way, shape, or form is it racist or showing any racism. It is wrong to be changed in the name of the Colonials. The reason I put the Colonials in is because, again, they fought for our country, they fought for our freedom, they went out and died for us. We cannot erase it. By doing this, changing the name, is paving the way to get rid of... Hold on. Many more things that our country stands for and fought for, and that will teach kids, younger kids, that our country was systemically racist. That's a lie. So we need to put an end to this tyrannical movement and go back to the Colonials. I think that we need to reconsider the renaming of the Colonials. There should be a student vote from grade seven to 12. And let students voice their opinion. Because if we silence all these voices that could persuade other people from seizing their critical vote, it could be a big mistake. I think we need to have more voices representing to end this, to the end this tyrannical movement. I rest my case. Has forever been the mascot of AB and represents the town and place we are from. Respect tradition in our own, in our town's history, better than anything else. This is my mascot and it represents the complete community, including minorities like me and others. Retain the mascot. Thank you.
All right. I want to thank all the members of the public who took time out of their evening to speak to us this evening. I especially appreciate everybody's flexibility in the reduced time so that we were able to get everyone's voice heard and give everybody an opportunity to speak this evening. I would also encourage everyone to stick around following Marie's superintendent update to see the presentation on the update for our Boardwalk Campus Building, as it should prove to be very interesting. And with that, I will hand it over to Marie for a superintendent's update.
Thank you, Adam. I have two topics, I'll try to be quick. One is a brief COVID update and the other is an update on hiring of administrators. We have seen a slight uptick in cases of COVID, and we've seen some small clusters where three or four students or staff in a classroom or in an area have tested positive. We are watching this closely, and if there is a school or classroom that shows higher numbers or possible transmission, we may ask them to wear masks for five days or so. Just to give you a little bit of magnitude, last week we had 46 cases. The previous four weeks ranged between seven and 14. So it's an uptick, not compared to early January where we had 285 cases in a single week. So we are watching it. And my second update has to do with administrative hiring. We have had a lot of hiring and we're in the process of it. So I just wanted to give you updates on the various schools. So at RJ Gray, we've been running the principal hiring process. And this last week, we had two finalists come and spend time in the district. One is Jim Markcott, who is the current interim principal. He's been an assistant principal here at AB for 13 years, four years at the high school, nine at RJ Gray. Before that, he was a Spanish teacher and he's now the interim principal. And the second finalist is Russ Cooperstein. He has spent 13 years working in international schools. He's currently a principal of the Colegio Maya School at the American School in Guatemala. He previously worked in Ouagadougou, Cairo, Serbia, and Cambodia. So a decision will be made and an announcement will be made in the next few days or so. We also let folks know that Marion Principal Juliana Schneider has accepted a position in Hamilton Wenham, which is much closer to her home. We want to wish Juliana all the best as she makes this transition. We have posted for a new principal of Marion and we are forming a search committee. You previously heard that we appointed two principals, one at Gates, that's Allison Warren. Allison's going to replace Lynn Newman when she retires at the end of the year. Allison has been the assistant principal there for a couple of years, and she was an assistant principal at the junior high for 13 years. Allison has recently appointed the next assistant principal for Gates. Her name is Kate Worth. Kate has taught in the North Middlesex Regional School District for the last 10 years. And, and while she's there, she's been a science curriculum leader. At Conant, we, we had notified you that we appointed Val Granzowitz to be the principal. She moved from assistant principal to principal. And Val has completed a full search process for the next assistant principal, and she has appointed Allison Leahy to be the assistant principal at Conant. Allison has been a longtime special ed teacher at McCarthy Town. In the last few years, she's been a special coordinator at McCarthy Town and Conant. At Douglas, Chris Whitbeck is retiring this year. We have had Lucia Sullivan at Douglas as an interim principal. She's going to continue on as an interim principal next year as well. All right, that's it.
Thanks. Any questions for Marie? Amy?
I have a question, but I have an announce, I have a, something to add, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to also say that Precenium Circus is play. The Importance of Being Earnest was named in first place for the regionals, and two of their students were given an outstanding acting award. And I won't say who they are, but I might know one of them.
Does this mean they move on to a state competition?
No, unfortunately, it just stops at regionals.
Gotcha. All right, any other questions for Marie on the update? Okay. Next up is the presentation on the Boardwalk Campus Building Project Update. So we've got some guests here with us this evening. Marie, do you want to make some introductions as they come up to the table?
Sure, we're really excited this evening. Through all of COVID and then some, our big teams who have been building the Boardwalk Campus School have been working to keep us on schedule and we're ready to open this building this summer. I'm gonna, and there have been tours the last couple of days, we're going to try to set up tours for the school committee as well. We're really excited for you to see the building. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jim Burrows. Jim is with Skanska and he is our owner's project manager, and he will introduce the rest of the team.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so to my left, Larry Spang with Arrow Street, Principal at Arrow Street, for our designer, and Jeremiah Driscoll with Consegly, serving as our construction manager. So obviously, we have a great team, lots of challenges through COVID, and, you know, having a good project team really is the most important thing, so. And thank you for the committee, for the opportunity to come here and share the exciting progress that we have. All right. So just a, just a quick overview of the schedule. Obviously, we always like to include going back to when you were invited into feasibility, which was February of 2017, so five years ago. We understand the district, long before we come on board, there's been a lot of work, hard work and planning that goes into this, and it's really nice to see that, you know, come to fruition in the form of the physical building. So as of May 2020, construction began. July of 2022, we will be turning the building over on schedule to the district, and then staff will be able to move in just after that point. The second phase is the demolition of the Gates and Douglas schools, and that will continue on through August of 2023. And then that'll be the final, final project completion. So we have a couple of figures up there, the overall project budget and our contingencies that are remaining, so we do remain on budget. We're happy to report, so on budget and on schedule. So with that, I'll turn over to Jeremiah to run through some of the progress.
All right, great, thank you very much and appreciate you having us. So what you see here is our overhead drone shot of the exterior of the building. So right now, we have really closed in the majority of the building. We have our windows installed, our curtain wall, our storefront. So you'll see the majority of the glass in the building as well as a lot of the metal panel. One of the other key, big deliveries that we recently have received is, you'll see the three gray cubes up on top of the roof. Those are our rooftop handling units that we've eagerly anticipated for about 46 weeks, so we are very happy to have those installed. So we're, we're very busy connecting to those interior. The other key aspects too is the lower building that you see on the first floor is the cafeteria, and we're currently completing the Trespa woodgrain metal panel. So it's really taking shape and you can see the building coming together and it's really, it's exciting. One of the other key aspects too is the landscape and hardscape that is going to be starting up in very short order. So in between the building, in the, if you can kind of see where the, where the lifts are, it's probably hard to pick out here, but we'll soon have our sidewalks landscaping and the rain gardens. So a lot of the exterior hardscape features that you've probably seen, a lot of the renderings in the early phases are going to start to actually be installed. So all in all, we are, we are really ramping up. So that's from the exterior side. Interior is, one more exterior shot, we wanted to show you a couple of comparisons. So the original rendering of the exterior of the building, this is the entrance way at the bus loop. So you'll see on your left-hand side is the original Arrow Street rendering. On the right-hand side is the current progress. So right now, the metal panel is being wrapped around, and as April vacation is upon us, we're going to be taking advantage of that time where the bus loop will be a little bit quieter and we'll be wrapping up the metal panel from the roadside. So excited to near the completion there. Let's go to the next one. All right, and the interior is the cafeteria. So again, rendering on the left-hand side, right-hand side's our current progress. So the, the center operable partition in the cafeteria has been, the framings installed, the large storefront windows that overlook the wetlands, can be a beautiful view there are in as well. You can't quite make it out on the side, but the stage is starting to take shape on the right-hand side. We're still working through some of the storage, the last little bits of free area in the building, so that's where you see a lot of the boxes and materials that are waiting to be installed. All right, let's take a look in the Gates classroom. So if, for those that were following the color schemes, the Gates level is green, Douglas more on the blues. So you see on the left-hand side, the Gates typical classroom. So on the right-hand side, you can see our current progress. We have a lot of the millwork, the cubbies, a lot of the millwork and cabinets to the left-hand side, as well as some flooring installed as well. But we have a lot of protection over the finished materials, so a lot of the plastic that you see covering materials just to keep them safe and sound. Next, you'll see the gym. So again, one of our last areas that has storage that we're kind of working our way out of the building, so rendering on the left-hand side and right-hand side is our actual. So earlier when we were talking about the rooftop units, right above the gym is some of the rooftops that we're connecting to. So you see that large circular ductwork and overhead mechanicals that are all being actively connected, and very soon, we're going to be working to connect the basketball hoops. Here's a, here's a shot of comparison of a typical Gates corridor. So in the corridors, you have the exterior bumpouts there, and you can kind of make out the ceramic tile. Again, we have a lot of protection in place and all the blue X's on the, on the glass is just that. It's all finished, installed glass, just to make sure no one bumps into it. Oh, sorry. Next one, no problem. So again, going down into your, the lower learning commons. So the learning commons is, as you enter the building from the main bus loop, your learning commons really invites you in with this big circular entryway. So you have a seating area with the millwork and then also a cloud ceiling. So right now, we're working through our final stages of our overhead mechanical rough, and some of the finishes are starting to be installed. So in a minute or two, you'll see one of our stairs. And then this gives you the north view of the learning commons. So this is on the backside, this will be closer to the wetlands, and this is a view from inside learning commons where we're... from inside learning commons where we're wrapping up the overhead mechanical rough. All right. So, get into the media center. So, you can see the large oval shape of the media center taking shape. So, really beautiful space. This will be, right now, we're wrapping up the soffit construction. So, you can see a lot of the staging that is built in and around there and that's in order to allow a lot of the lighting install that's up and above in the higher elevation. So, pretty exciting. That space is going to be really, really nice when it's completed. And then a couple of just standard progress shots. So, on the left-hand side, we have a group bathroom on the, for Gates. So, with our toilet partitions, a lot of our toilet specialties installed as well as the ceilings, our lights and FRP. And then that was our rooftop units being lowered down into position. All right. And on the left-hand side, here's an example of Douglas, one of the bubblers. So, some of the plumbing finishes installed, a lot of the ceramic tile. So, the building, over the course of the time, there's a lot of planning, a lot of coordination and now we're starting to see the finishes being installed. So, that's a sign that we're nearing the end. And then, of course, to your right-hand side is the big stair three. So, that's in the learning commons where you have a big sweeping stair that brings you in and around. So, it's quite something to be seen. And then lastly, just the corridors here. So, example of the Gates and the Douglas. This was the few areas that I could find that we were just wrapping up and have protection on. So, to give you an idea of the, within your corridors, a great info centers here. So, where you see that purple board, that's actually a placeholder. So, there's going to be whiteboards and tackboards for student and teacher use, for info boards, as well as there's little millwork seats on the bottom there. So, it's a really cool space for the kids to enjoy. That's really what we had.
Yep. Questions?
Thanks, JD. Questions? John?
You're a little excited, aren't you?
I am, I am. We're three months away from turning, getting our completion.
So, that's actually my first question. So, although obviously it'll be very exciting to see, you know, students and faculty in the new building, that really won't be the end of the project. I understand there's going to be some other work to do. So, I was hoping you would comment about when will really be done and then of that $3 million contingency, where do you think we'll ultimately land?
Yep. So, overall, the final completion is August of 2023. So, in that year timeframe, there, it'll be the demolition of the Douglas School to Gates School, finishing of fields, playgrounds, the final parking. So, from a contingency standpoint, right now, I think we are cautiously optimistic and comfortable where we stand. We're constantly managing it. Myself and Jeremiah are talking on a daily basis on where we stand, but I think we're in a comfortable position right now.
The building looks exciting. I want to go back to first grade. I'm just curious, is how environmentally friendly is this building? And, you know, I hear about buildings being LEED certified and all that. Is this building so? And also, I've seen the modern buildings, they take advantage of the rooftop to create like gardens or sort of like vegetable, you know, whatever. But I see that our rooftop is so plain, is that a plan going forward? I'm just curious.
All right. Did you want to add this?
Yeah, I couldn't.
Yep, sorry.
There we go.
Oh, 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 sorry.
Okay. I'll talk loudly and hopefully folks can hear me.
Yes, sir.
We'll do, okay. So, I think everybody should be proud that this building will really be a leader in sustainability and building performance. We set out with a goal to be a net zero building, both in terms of the energy usage, but also in terms of water and waste, which is a really high set of goals and we are on track to do all that. It has resulted in some great things that are happening in the building. We also look at it in terms of the mechanical systems, that the amount of fresh air that's put into the building and the sort of recycling of the air will be much better than it has been in the past. So, in terms of the a leader in that, as well as healthy materials. And we look a lot at the materials. There is research in outgassing of materials and things like that. We're trying to avoid that and have kept everything that's what's known as a red list out of the building. And so, we're working. So, I think everybody around the table, because it really is a joint effort from the community as well as the design and construction team, should be proud because it will be one of the most sustainable and high-performing buildings in the state when it's finished.
Yes, a lot of solar panels on the roofs and the roof of the cafeteria is designed to support a green roof system. There wasn't money in the budget to do that just yet, but it's definitely on the list of things that we would consider.
Yeah, we'd love to see that. I was up on the second floor looking out and I thought, boy, that would be great to see a green roof there if we can find some money.
Other questions, comments?
I just want to add a little bit. First of all, Mary Brolin is here. She has chaired the school building committee since 2017, I think it is. JD is here, our own JD head, our Director of School Operations, who, you know, is working with the building project team nonstop in addition to all of the other the visioning and the first study was 2015 and they said it's going to take seven years and we were like, no, really no. But really, it's so exciting to be this close. And the last thing I'll say is the other day, some of the Consigli team went over to Douglas for all-school meeting and showed lots of pictures and there was a singing of a version of Under the Boardwalk that was tailored to the new school and the kids are getting really excited. And the project teams have included kids as much as possible along the way and it's really, really fun to see that happen.
Well, thank you guys for joining us. We are going to arrange for a visit to the building for the school committee. So, look out for an email. We're going to try and find some dates to get everybody on site, hopefully within the next month, because when I was talking to JD about that yesterday, he said things up. So, we'll try to by the end of the month, get whoever's interested to go take a tour through the space. We did so this week. We had a number of people from the building committee through this week and it's, progress is absolutely amazing. Thank you guys for the great work.
Thank you.
Next item is a public hearing for the school choice program. So, noting the hour, half hour tardy, and the presence of the quorum, I do call the FY23 school choice hearing to order. Does anybody from the public want to comment or ask a question? There's now a three-minute limit per person who wishes to speak. Marie, did you have anything you wanted to add other than what was in the memo about the school choice program?
No, I mean, in your packet, you'll, you know, there's some background around the regulations with school choice and my memo tries to explain, but basically, we've been sort of phasing out of it for about 15 years. It takes that long because you have all of the siblings that come along and so we would ask you, last year you voted to withdraw from school choice. It needs to be an annual vote. So, we would ask you to vote to continue with that based on class size and space limitations.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the FY23 school choice hearing and then we'll vote at our regular meeting.
So moved.
John moved and Amy seconded, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. So, now, I will look for a motion to withdrawal from the school choice program due to class size and space limitations, noting that existing school choice students will remain through graduation. I'm entertaining that motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Amy moved and Ginny seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Onto ongoing business. So, there was a memo in the packet from me around establishing the pool naming subcommittee. So, I've asked Ben and Amy to serve as school committee members for that and I've asked Peter to nominate two folks from the school administration and we'll look to add one member of the community to sit on that subcommittee to take up the request to rename the pool, to seek feedback on the current name suggestion and any additional suggestions. And I just do want to note that in the memo I did share, I'm sensitive to the fact that the school district in particular is pretty busy with a lot of activities around naming and so, as much as we would like to move this quickly, I would like to make sure that we get the right feedback. So, I ask that the committee bring back a response and a suggestion to this committee no later than the beginning of September, so we can vote on it by the end of September at our second meeting in September.
Thanks for that.
Yep. Next up, third quarter financial report. Dave?
So, you did get material sent out last Friday, which constitutes the spreadsheet analyses that I may refer to in this as the report. So, you've gotten the report. Want to say that there's a bit of apology for issuing the third quarter reports with so much in redo of that. You, I say C update, that's the report. This is pretty straightforward. The numbers here generally are what you saw in that report. Excuse me. I do think that we're likely to end up somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 of surplus on the revenue side. And you can see the variance as a percent. There are a couple of things that are still in play. I think there's a better chance that we'll end up more likely to the good than the bad. Transportation aid, the final rate isn't announced until June and we've done better each of the last few years with one exception by, when they've announced their final rate. And if you've kept track of state finances, they're doing very well. Medicaid reimbursement, we do have additional reimbursements expected. We just got something in the email, I just got something in an email today. So, the amounts that you see there are based on what we've actually received to date and we should be bettering that. And there could be some bettering of interest income. Rates have skyrocketed lately to more than 0.1 of 1%. And so, we cut that back, we cut back our projection to virtually no interest income, even though we were investing a healthy sum of money. But there could be, we could end up better than this dire prediction by the end of the This next slide is one that if you were here last year, specifically at the end of last year, you've already seen. This was the slide that I presented in the Q4 update for FY21 and it's there just to get a bit of a framework for comparison with FY22, which is what you're going to see on the next slide. And just to remember, last year was a COVID year. And so, I've taken, you see where the arrow is in the pink, the pink letterhead column heading? That's where we ended up for these particular budget categories in FY21. And so, what I've presented in the two right columns is the report. So, what we're projecting as of Q3 in the report that you received, a net variance of only $118,000 compared to a million more than that by the end of last year. And what we've done, just generally, April 7th to issue a third quarter report is on the early side. These numbers were prepared before Q3 even technically ended. We're not General Motors or something that quarterly income is going to affect a stock price, but the fact is, we typically issue a quarterly report a month plus after the fact. We like to get everything together and analyzed. And so, by the third quarter, we're, by this point in time, we're still carrying a lot of our budget line items at budget, meaning we haven't, we haven't looked through to see if purchase orders can be liquidated and what other things, what other industry are in there that make us think that we might have some surplus dollars in those line items? That's what's going to happen. So, the as of Q3 FY22 column, you see in the report, the details, the major details ending up with 118 to the good. What I've done with my team has gone through each of these categories to see where could we end up? Where could we potentially land if things trend the way they usually do? And so, personnel, we, personnel turnback is generally in the $300,000 to $500,000 range. This wouldn't be a surprise. It's better than last year because last year's turnback was lower primarily due to increased staff costs with the RLP and the multi modes of instruction for last year. Special ed tuition is a lot better this year and we could even end up a little better than what we're projecting at, per the report. We had several families move out of the district during this, during this year, whose children had significant out-of-district costs. And if you remember the budget presentations, this, because it's this year, is a precursor to the reduction in the tuition that we took in the FY23 budget. Facilities and transportation, FY22 returned to a more normal use of buildings. The last couple of years, we've had a significant savings in utilities, which is, which can happen when buildings aren't occupied. This year, we've not only returned to full instruction for the day students, but we've returned to Wednesdays, having buildings occupied for extended day and weekends for use by community groups. In addition, there's a big swing between a half a million dollar positive variance last year and between $2 and $100,000 deficit this year. Utility and fuel costs, rate increases have happened this year, we're experiencing that. And there's been a greater usage of utilities and energy based on the additional uses of the buildings. And I'm skipping over these, looking at the ones that jump out at me where there's a pretty significant change from what happened last year. Instructional budgets, we had a very early budget hold in FY21 and the costs, costs from FY21 were down anyway because of the lack of live students compared to normal and certainly compared to this year. We have reserved instructional budgets this year to be able to show a potential turnback of 100,000 versus a deficit, which is what the spreadsheets that my team operates from is showing nominally right now. And the last thing that I'm going to comment on is the line contingency. In both cases, the expenses that are represented there have to do with EDCO and the EDCO liabilities from FY21 and FY22. Peter has kept you abreast of that. The difference is that we charged the $165,000 liability last year to the COVID contingency line item, which had a $500,000 budget, hence the remainder was returned as a turnback. We didn't have a budget this year. We expect the liability to be about $100,000 and so, for consistency, we charged it to the same line. It really is not anything that has to do with the ongoing operation of the school district. So, this will hopefully be the last time you see EDCO costs in a financial report. And so, the title speaks for itself here. For, we have two columns for each of the last two years. What did we turn back? What did we use for E and D in the following year? We were pretty, coincidentally, not by design, I assure you, because of the time were pretty, coincidentally, not by, by design, I assure you, because of the timing involved. But we were pretty consistent with what was turned back versus what was used in the following year. So for here, what I've done in the last column you see is to incorporate the ranges from the two previous analyses. And so what we're saying is that revenue surplus will be between 175 and 300 and expenditure turnback between 118 and 700 or a total of between 300 to a million. That's, John loves, loves it when we put in ranges and we've, shall I say finally seen fit to, to do that. I would, I guess I would offer for consideration going forward that each of the last couple of years in the budget goals, we have put, try to reduce the use of reserves. I guess I would submit that what you're looking at now, if, if the, if the final number ends between 300 and a million, and I would be comfortable saying we're probably leaning closer to the million than, than to the 300 as of now. Perhaps whatever that number ends up, and we'll know it, we won't know it, it won't be certified by July, or this year it wasn't certified until February, but we'll have a bead on it. And maybe that estimated number pending certification should be the out of the box planned use of E and D for the following year, i.e. FY24 budget. You can see that there's a, there's a one year skip in when you know what your turnback is versus when you're on the hook to vote the use of it in a budget. But that might be something that we come back to you with a proposed goal for next year. It may be something that seems blatantly obvious and, and I'm the master of that. So we'll leave it at that. I do expect, as I said, we should end up on the higher end of that range. The variant, what could happen? Salaries, we typically, I went through all that. I have an extraneous note here that I forgot to get rid of. I'm sorry. And this is just in, in pictures, the same, the same numbers as, as on the previous slide. It's not too far off if we achieve the potential that I, that I put in the last slide. If you just look at it pretty quickly across the top, yeah, those, those three numbers are pretty much the same. If that dark blue column doesn't materialize, then it, then it won't look the same at all. The bigger issue, and this is what I was alluding to with my suggestion, is using more E and D than reasonably expected to replenish is not a good long-term strategy. And that's preaching to the choir. And so even though I know it's not his last meeting, but here's a meme depicting John and his soon-to-be proverbial riding off into the sunset. And note that fittingly, both the cowboy and the horse are on the range. You're very kind. I didn't anticipate that, but that was.
Thank you, Dave.
That's my report.
I appreciate the end of the meeting presentation. So I will open it up to questions, John.
I have a range of questions. First of all, I will offer my condolences related to comparing year over year, these last three years, which couldn't possibly be more crazy and less comparable. But I will, you know, use that as the entree to the first question. So we created, you know, as a function of COVID, this contingency line item, which you are then using this year as a placeholder for, let's put EDCO there because this is, you know, some line item, you know, standing in the budget that might or might not have revenue in it. Or if something like EDCO were to happen again, would you simply park it someplace else?
Personally, from experience, what I would say is, first of all, it's got to be fairly big. And both of these were over $100,000. I'd consider that fairly big. What are you going to do with it? Realistically, you could have voted it out of E and D. You could have made a budget, consciously made a budget transfer. Last year, we had that contingency account that it became clear later in the year when the EDCO liability arose that we weren't going to need to tap. And so that became a nice place to take it from because we've got this half a million dollar appropriation sitting there. And so we used it. Not to, not that the EDCO demise wasn't in some way related to COVID, but that wasn't the, wasn't necessarily it. That it appears in the same line in this analysis is just to call attention to it. We could have buried it somewhere and, and explained it in the superintendent's line item to say, oh yeah, that's up this year because EDCO is there. I just chose to put it down at the bottom. And the fact that we're spending 100 unbudgeted this year versus 165 last year, if we didn't have that 500,000, you'd have seen the two expenses side by side. But I just wanted to call attention to it for visibility purposes.
Anybody else have questions before we go back to John? I'm going to make an, an observation before we go back to John. And the observation relates for next year. We need turnback, use of E and D, and how we make that more sustainable. John, another question?
Holders to report to. We do have town meeting members to report to. So I think this of supporting town meeting. Better to have this a little bit closer to town meeting, assuming we had a school committee meeting, you know, appropriately placed. Before you had to put those numbers down. So that's to work with. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Recommend, uh, submittal is the same document that has been recommended and submitted for but what it does is when next year. And hopefully we'll be able to competing with other communities and the Commonwealth for
That this year, this is simply a placeholder. It has no particular consequence. But if we're looking at the same language next year, it's applying to that next year. The project theoretically could be done. So there is the possibility. If we did get a favorable reaction at that.
The school committee should have a fairly serious conversation. Do you want to see this as a core building project? Meaning, a core building project is a magnitude of scale higher than a simple addition renovation. So that would be more of like a tear down rebuild. Or does the building fit the criteria for an addition renovation or maybe just a renovation? Ways to within the community program where you ask the state to fund the roof, the envelope, mechanical, you know, it'll be lesser of a scale than what we're looking at currently in West Acton. And, you know, that could work, you know? So I think at some point in time in the fall want to going to start look closely at Conant, which will help feed the information that will go into the document for next year as well.
Any other questions? I would
Okay, so I was supposed to start.
You can start, move to authorize.
No, I'm not seeing it.
John just realized what he volunteered to.
AD Taylor Road Acton Mass, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for the following priorities. Priority two, elimination of severe overcrowding. Building lacks the space to operate as a three-section school while also accommodating other necessary programs to meet the needs of all students. Priority five, replacement renovation or modernization of the school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy costs related in a school facility. Based on a facility study, the building is in need of $22,500,000 in related costs. And an additional $2,120,000 replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The building is over 50 years old, having been constructed years later. Know just that by no way or any other funding commitment from Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the acts in Boxborough Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Kindergarten update from Marie operated by Dave. Let's see the teamwork here.
Pour's and presentations, but that still didn't happen. We still did them remotely. But nonetheless, we closed registration on March 31st. And so here are the numbers that we anticipate going into the lottery. So our projection was 334 and we currently have 284. Even with the idea that we probably have another 20 students enrolling between now and October 1st, we would still be 30 students under projection, which I sort of anticipated, to be honest. So that will leave us with 309 students. And Acton was under projection by 17 students and Boxborough was under projection by 13 students. Boxborough had a projection of 68. That projection is 25% higher than what we have. So on a percentage basis, it's quite a bit. The good news about that is we really couldn't afford to have four classrooms of kindergarten at Blanchard next year. So it's really, really good from a space point of view that we can manage well with three kindergartens instead of four. On the next slide, I talk a little bit about kindergarten volatility. You know, we had a couple of years where we were, we had many more students than the projection, but the last four years now, we've had many fewer students than the projection. So we continue to work with NESDEC to see if they can hone the information they have about our towns. And so right now, we're looking at probably being 30 students under projection. The next slide has enrollment by town history. And so you can sort of see the patterns. The Boxborough has stayed pretty comfortably in the 49 to 55 range for several years. That's a great number. You can, you can accommodate three classrooms at each grade. Prior to that, we had a couple of years where we had to have a fourth classroom. And that's what's really kind of filled up the school. And Acton is sort of ranging around, you know, between 230 and 260 or so. So we continue to watch that. So then the next slide has more numbers than you can probably read. The chart is in the memo and, but basically this is by school, what the choices were. So one key number we were watching was how many students live in Boxborough and are going to request the hometown guarantee. There were 47. So that is great because again, the projection was for 68 Boxborough students. We also have some Acton families who are enrolled at Blanchard and have siblings coming in who have a priority to Blanchard. So there were four of those. So we're comfortable with the number of kids we have going into Blanchard. We did have more requests than we have seats available. So there'll be a small lottery. And so of the Acton families who picked Blanchard, there were six of them and three of them will get Blanchard and three of them won't unless the numbers change a lot between now and the lottery in a couple of weeks. The other school that's going to have a lottery is Gates and a Half, but we could put as many as 20 into each of those classes. There'd be a lottery with relatively around seven kids. So all in all, across six schools, only 10 students would not get their first choice at the time of the lottery, which is maybe as good as I ever remember it being. And we do have kids move in over time. We place them in schools that don't have wait lists. So there are chances that kids can move off the waitlist as well. I will tell you, one of the reasons that we don't have a big lottery at any of the schools is because we had originally planned on having two kindergartens at McCarthy Town. McCarthy Town had 53 first choices, enough to fill three classes. So we actually moved that. So we're going to have three kindergartens at McCarthy Town. And instead, we've decided to go with two at Conant. So we do need to have two at one school. Conant is the, in the biggest need of space. And the numbers worked out perfectly for two at Conant and three at McCarthy Town. So that was, you know, in the last week, based on the actual choices, what we decided to do. And, and my last slide, I think it's the last slide, is about the budget. And this is a good news thing. Based on the projections, we budgeted for 18 kindergartens. And that might've been four at Blanchard. It might've been one more in Acton, depending on the choices and where everybody lived. But based on our, being 30 below the projection, we do not, we can reduce one classroom. So we can go from 18 to 17. And that will save about $62,000 in next year's budget. So we're feeling pretty good about that. And even with that, we're at 18 and a half projected class size. The range is 18 to 20. We love it if it can be in the 18, 18 and a half range because by the time they get to fourth, fifth, sixth grade, they're still within guidelines, even with the kids who move in over time. So we just wanted to give you kind of an overview and update of where we stand and what's going to happen with the lottery.
Thanks, Marie. Questions? Evelyn?
Savings coming from.
Being a little worried about what was going to possibly happen with kids in Boxborough. We thought we needed 18 classrooms. We only need 17 classrooms. So we do not have to have from the budget. And it's kind of a wash in the tuition account because we won't get as much tuition because we don't have as many kids. But we also don't have to charge the expenses that were charged there. And not doing it at kindergarten is 62,000 and And not doing it at kindergarten is $62,000 in savings, but what it really means is saving a classroom for seven years. So, it's really about a half a million-dollar savings over time by being able to have seven level.
For budgetary purposes, but
in pretty that two students fewer than the officer. They weren't ready to make a change to how they were projecting Boxborough, but I think it might be time. Yeah. Hundred percent sure.
I would just add that from a increase in students, it means that we're going to start to see a greater increase in the share of the assessment, and that's something that we've been communicating to the select board in Boxborough pretty regularly. So, to see this change, that, you know, it's still important to highlight to them, but it's, you know, not as relevant as quickly as we might have been scaring them to believe, you know? Dave?
Exactly what I was going to say. Two things for what they're worth is projecting out, and right now, I go as far as FY '27. What's Acton's versus Boxborough's share is going to be? That's not using my data or Marie's data. That's using NASDAQ's data for what they project out. And the other thing, if it ever comes to be, is knowing in advance when the district might get the benefits of the SOA. It's, it's the basis for doing that, in my opinion, is going to be enrollment and students. And if, if it looks like X number of years out, hey, I can, I can see a case where you might get some SOA money, that again, would be based on the data, the objective data that we have, which is NASDAQ.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the kindergarten update? No? Thank you, Marie.
One thing, sorry, one quick thing.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Can we release Dave?
Yeah, we can release Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Just, the Blanchard space concerns is something you should all pay attention to, and the fact that we didn't have to do a fourth this year is a big deal. If we had to do four classrooms multiple years, there wouldn't be enough room for all the kids who want Boxborough. And so, we may be in a position to have to decide between expanding a building or making some modifications to the hometown guarantee. And so, the hometown guarantee is, you know, something we've honored. It's now seven or eight years since full regionalization. We actually, this year, set ourselves up where we said, if you enroll by the lottery, you'll get your hometown guarantee, but after that, we have to see. And that would be families who move in after we have filled the classes. Not, I don't anticipate we're going to have to go there now, this year, but at some point. And we have four sections at two of the grades, and they'll graduate out at some point. I think they're at third and fourth right now. That will give us back two classrooms, so we could do it again if we had to, but something may have to give at some point. So, I just want you to be aware that those are high priorities for everyone to have to kind of consider.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Subcommittee and Member Reports. Budget Subcommittee, Kira.
I don't actually have a lot to add to this evening, except to say that the Budget Sub met, not this past Monday, but the Monday before. And, and we met as a pretty small Subcommittee to talk about our strategy for town meeting, and to look at the slides, to pick our intrepid presenters, which will be Adam and the good Mr. John Peterson for Acton. And now, it is my pleasure to look at these slides from previous years and come up with a draft for this year's slides, which John will read. It'll be his last ride at town meeting, and good for him. So, thank you very much, John, for graciously doing that work, and thank you, Adam. You had to do it anyway, but I'll thank you anyway. Budget Sub will meet again on the 25th.
Well, you know when I'm up there, and then, you know, they say, "Well, are there any questions?" If there are any questions, you know, I'll immediately say, "Can I phone a friend?"
All right, Policy Update. Nora, your committee met on March 29th.
Thank you, Adam. The Policy Subcommittee met, and we have been working on the social media policy. You'll see a greatly revised version of it in your packet, and looking for feedback, possibly a vote tonight if the committee wants to do so on the updated social media policy.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the social media policy or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the, oh, see, I had it in front of me. Wait, it's here. Move to approve the new social media policy file, IJNDD. That's it.
Give me a second. Thank you. So, Amy moved, and Evelyn seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. John, comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the procedure struck me as both long and written at a level beyond what it needs to be. So, the procedure's not Nora's issue. That's not policy. But, you know, for everybody who works in a compliance environment, and I know Evelyn is familiar with this issue, if you put too many pages in front of people, it's just like all these end-user license agreements that people hit agree on. Nobody's reading anything. It doesn't help. So, I get why people want the procedures to be very prescriptive and deal with every case. I'm not sure that really is serving our purpose of providing good guidance to our employees.
Thank you, John. I'm reading between the lines that there's a compliment there to the policy, for now being more readable, because we worked on it a lot. It's complicated, and the procedures are long, but we were dealing with a lot of, it's a lot of complex tensions, and so, thank you for your unspoken compliment to the readability of policy.
Indeed. All right, moving on to the Consent Agenda. So, items on the Consent Agenda do not usually require discussion and are approved with one vote unless any member would like to hold an item for discussion and a separate vote. I'll read each item's name, and if any member would like it held, please say "Hold." Approval of the ABRHS meeting minutes of 3/17/22, as amended in our final packet, as well as the meeting minutes from 3/24/2022 and 3/25/2022. Item two, reconsideration of the meeting minutes of 2/3/2022, 2/17/2022, 3/3/2022 regarding the list of documents used. Recommendation to transfer inactive ABRHS student activities gardening club fund balance per policy JJEF. Recommendation to approve the ABRPTSO grant to ABRHS for Community Service Awards Night. And finally, the recommendation to approve Gates' PTO donation for the end-of-the-year celebration. Hearing no "holds," is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Kira moved, and John seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Do I have a volunteer to read the Statement of Warrants, which can be found in the packet on page? Scroll, 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 scroll. Kira's got it.
Okay.
95. If everyone has reviewed the warrants, then someone can make a motion.
I'm making a motion. I move that the school committee vote to approve payroll warrants as follows. Number P2220 dated 3/24/2022 in the amount of $2,802,304.55. Payroll deduction warrants as follows. Number 22020PR dated 3/24/2022 in the amount of $1,198,754.29. Vendor warrants as follows. Number 2219A dated 3/10/2022 in the amount of $407.16. Number 2219B dated 3/10/2022 in the amount of $407.16. Number 2219 dated 3/17/2022 in the amount of $1,823,658.40. Number 2220 dated 3/31/2022 in the amount of $1,617,414.50.
Kira moved, and John and Amy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any, what's the other one you do? Nose? Been a long night. That's unanimous. Okay, and with that, Marie, is there anything in the FYI we want to highlight this evening?
Just please look at the calendar for meetings and put them on your calendars for next year, and the Acton Town Meeting starts May 16th. The Boxborough Town Meeting starts May 9th. Please put both of those dates on your calendar, and the Boxborough Annual Election is May 17th.
Thank you. I'll point out that both the Summer Workshop and the Summer Business Meeting, one scheduled for July, one for August, has yet to be scheduled, so those dates don't exist. You can expect an email from Beth polling when is acceptable time for everybody. Okay, and with that, we have a need for an executive session to be convened under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22F, to consider approval and possible release of executive session minutes from previous meetings on December 2nd, 2021, February 3rd, 2022, March 3rd, 2022, March 17th, 2022. I will note that the committee will not return to open meeting. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Andrew, did you move?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to give that motion to Andrew, and the second to Evelyn, and we do have to do a roll call, voopt. Andrew?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kira?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Myself, yes, that is unanimous. Thank you. We are adjourned to executive session.